I have a meeting of the Park District of Highland Park's Board of Commissioners, 6:00 PM, Tuesday, January 31st, 2017, here at West Ridge Center. Kathy, could we please call the roll?
Commissioner Bernstein.
Here.
Commissioner Flores Weiskopf and Commissioner Kaplan will not be present tonight. Vice President Runtenberg.
I'm here.
And President Myers.
And I'm here as well. Good to see everyone. Even in the absence of two commissioners, we have a quorum and can continue with business. But I would note that any business we take will need to be passed on a unanimous basis.
Good point.
Right.
Does that mean all three of us have to vote the same way?
Yes, it does.
Just for the record.
Let the record reflect that Barney scored an SAT point. So our, the only item of, well, first item of business will be a public hearing concerning the intent of the Board of Park Commissioners to sell $9 million of general obligation, limited tax park bonds for the payment of land condemned or purchased for parks, for the building, maintaining, improving, and protecting of the same and the existing land and facilities of the district, and for the payment of the expenses incident there, too. This public hearing for the issuance of those bonds is now in session. Why don't we call the roll again for the special hearing?
Commissioner Bernstein.
Here.
Vice President Runtenberg. President Myers.
And I am still here as well. We still have a quorum and can still proceed with business. Are there any members of the Board of Commissioners who wish to comment on this issuance?
The only thing I would, I would mention is, is that this, this issuance of the bonds is consistent with our financial plan that, how long ago did we adopt it? Like, a year, two years ago? And this is being done in a prudent manner, in fiscally responsible manner, to help pay for capital and green print projects. This is something that is, that we have planned for, for at least a couple of years. We've discussed the, how we're going to fund the projects that are listed in both our capital plan and in green print. And as a result, and I think this has been on our website for this, the plan to do this has been on our website for at least the last two years. So the public has been notified. We've been as transparent as possible with regard to this, and, and this is consistent with our, what, what both the Finance Committee and the Board has endorsed in the past.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernstein. Commissioner Runtenberg?
That says it all.
I think Commissioner Bernstein makes a very good point in pointing out that this is a planned bond issuance. We had this crazy idea as part of green print that we should figure out how to pay for it. And so, rather than just trying to issue as many bonds as we possibly could as quickly as we can, we've come up with, I think, a very thoughtful and well-structured bond strategy, thanks in no small part to our Director of Finance. And this is the next planned segment of that funding process. And I think, hopefully, this will continue to be a blueprint for the Park District, or a green print for the Park District, as it goes forward in how to fund other projects, to make sure that our bonding is put to good use and does not just accumulate unnecessarily. All right. Any further comments from the Board? Executive Director McElroy, are you aware of any written communications that were received related to the Park District's issuance of the tax bonds?
We have not received any communication at all.
Thank you. Are there any citizens present who would like to comment on the tax bonds? Let the record reflect, there were none. Given the absence of written comments, or the presence of members of the public with comments, could I please get a motion to close this hearing?
Some motion?
Second.
Can I get a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Kathy, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bernstein.
Aye.
Vice President Runtenberg.
Aye.
President Myers.
Aye. The motion passes. And that also concludes our hearing. So, moving on to the direct items on our ordinary agenda.
Did we just do a motion to close the public hearing? Do we have to do a motion on the bonds?
That will happen on February 21st.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Any requests from the Commissioners for additions to the agenda? All right. Any comments from the public and any items on our agenda this evening? Hearing none. That brings us to our next item, which is our consent agenda. You see listed there items A through F, all of which relate to items included in our board packets and or discussed at prior meetings and workshops. Any requests for removal of any of the consent agenda items? Hearing none. Could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed?
Some motion.
Second.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Kathy, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Bernstein.
Aye.
Vice President Runtenberg.
Aye.
President Myers.
Aye. The motion passes. The consent agenda is approved. That will then bring us to unfinished business. Our first topic is the 2017 Sunset Valley Golf Course renovation bid approval. Director Malarsik.
Good evening.
Good to see you.
Good evening. Speaking of project funding, so, at the, at the January workshop meeting, I gave an extensive overview and answered questions pertaining to the Sunset Valley Golf Course renovation. Tonight, we'll review the process and ask for approval of the project bid. Golf Course Renovation Project went out to bid on December 1st, 2016. We held a mandatory pre-bid meeting on December 8th, and the district sent bid packets out to six golf course management companies and over 30 contractors. On January 10th, we received two qualified bids. To refresh everyone's memory, the base bid for this project includes rebuilding all 18 greens that meet USGA specifications, hole shaping with strategically placed bunkers, multiple tee complexes to create different course lengths, cart path rerouting, and additional curbing features. Hole number four will be the new signature golf hole, and that would include a larger lake and a stone wall that will reshape the green into a peninsula. Hole number five enhancement, which includes a new green site cut into the existing landform behind the original green with a fescue outlining. Hole number 12 is a expansion of the lake. Hole number 13 will include a new green site, which results in a longer hole. Hole 16 is another expansion of the lake. And on hole 18, we have new putting surface that will connect with the existing practice putting green to create one large putting surface, providing a dual purpose. So here's a look at the numbers. In accordance with the district's approved capital improvement plan, $378,062 has been budgeted in the 2016 and 2017 district-wide stormwater management and district-wide master plan project budget. $225,000 of those funds have been allocated for both the Sunset Valley Golf Course and the Pogo Project. Stormwater relief for Pogo is being provided as a part of the golf course renovation work. Additionally, this golf course renovation project will provide additional stormwater relief to the adjacent neighborhood. The total budget amount within green print for the Sunset Valley Golf Course improvement is $7 million. The golf course renovation budget is $5.65 million, and the clubhouse renovation project is $1.35 million. The golf course renovation budget impact and breakdown is as follows. Wadsworth Golf Course Construction Company was the low bidder, coming in with a base bid of $4,227,391. The rest of the budget includes soft costs, construction contingency, owner's contingency, and the 2017 golf course labor and materials budget, which totals $5,478,516. Project alternates were also added to the bid strictly to help the project team understand the financial impact of the items within the base bid, to give flexibility to keep or remove items from the project if the bid were to come in over budget. A description of all the additions and deductions that were included are in your board packet. All deduction items were important to the project and are included in the base bid price. Staff, however, is not recommending any deduction items. All addition items are important to the project as well, and were originally included in the base bid. Due to the, due to the budget concerns, however, the project team decided to pull them out and list them as add alternates to be considered, only if the project came within, within the So after review of all the alternates and the financial impacts, the project team is recommending accepting add alternates E, M, and O. Alternate E is for a better graded sand bunker, bunker sand, excuse me. The total for this item is $28,188. The better bunker sand will have less sand runoff after storms, drain stormwater better, and provide better playability for our golfers.
That's functional, not aesthetic?
Uh, yes. Yeah. It's also aesthetically pleasing as well.
That's just a bonus.
It is a bonus, right. And it's also worth noting that sand traps are amongst the top three golfer complaints at Sunset Valley.
But they should shoot better.
I won't go there, but. Alternate M is cart path sealant. The total for this addition is $33,213.
Actually, Scott, starting off, being in a bunker is not bad, if you're a good golfer.
Or if you're a good bunker player.
Yeah, but it's just a question getting the ball out of the bunker, if it's good sand.
Thank you.
Is it white sand?
No.
It's not white sand.
I'm sorry, I couldn't let that go.
So this alternate would include seal coating all existing cart paths as opposed to doing nothing. The current cart path condition warrants the need for this alternate. And alternate O is to replace the existing irrigation control system. This, the total for this alternate is $88,848. Staff was notified that our existing control system at Sunset Valley is going to be obsolete in two years, and they're not going to make parts anymore. So we thought this addition would be beneficial moving forward.
That spend is a when, not an if.
Yes. Yep. So the total for all of our recommended add alternates is $150,249. So here's a look at the project budget, including the staff-recommended add alternates. The total Sunset Valley course renovation with the alternates is $5,628,765, which is 21,000, roughly 21,000 under the $5.65 million budget number. That still includes the budgeted contingencies. So as I noted in the, in the previous slide, we're carrying a $300,000 construction contingency and a $100,000 owner's contingency. A district-wide bridge assessment was conducted that included nine bridges at Sunset Valley Golf Course. As a result, stabilizing the eroding banks will be necessary during this project. Additionally, staff received the first round of permit revisions back from the Lake County Stormwater Commission that will require further design and earthwork. Both of these financial impacts will be taken from the construction contingency, and it is still our goal to remain within the total project budget. Staff will keep the Board updated as we learn more about these actual costs. The remaining project schedule and next steps are as follows. We plan on, we're looking for a contract to be awarded at tonight's meeting. Then we'll start with the clubhouse design phase aspect between February and March. The clubhouse construction documents phase would be between April and May. We hope to receive our final permits back from all the agencies between April 15th and May 1st. Then we would have our contractor mobilization and golf course construction to begin the first two weeks of May, hopefully by May 15th. Then we'd be looking for our clubhouse bid, to go out to bid around July 15th. Clubhouse bid would be awarded at the September board meeting. The golf course construction ends in middle of September. Our clubhouse construction timeline right now would be October 2017 to May of 2018. And then the golf course, our anticipated open date would be July 1st of 2018. So with that, staff recommends the acceptance of the base bid and alternates E and M from Wadsworth Golf Construction Company, in a total of $4,270,292. And I'm happy to answer any questions that the Board may have.
You want to add alternate O, I thought, too, irrigation control?
Right. So, I'm glad you brought that up. So alternate O would be something that we would do, not with Wadsworth Golf Construction.
Commissioner Bernstein, this has largely been your baby. Anything you want to say about this?
Again, I think I said it at the workshop meeting, where we had a long discussion about this. It's very exciting. I appreciate the entire, the hard work of the entire staff, the Golf Course Advisory Committee, and, and the group, the working group, Dan and everyone who worked to make this happen. This is a, we, you know, we've been talking about this for, I think, seven, eight years, about what we're going to do with the golf course. We knew we had to do something. There was a lot of discussion involving the city and the, and the country club, and, and there was a very thoughtful and thorough analysis done comparing the two courses. And there were some studies done that have been posted on our website, were, which led the Park Board to make the determination that the legacy course, which is Sunset Valley, would be the course that we decide to invest in, invest in. As we've talked about, and nauseam is that, you know, this course has existed since the 1920s. I think they had a Ryder Cup practice here in the 1930s sometime. The, many of the greens, original greens from the 19, from the 1920s was just, which are, from a long-term perspective, is not sustainable. And so, as, as we went through the green print process, and subsequent to the green print process, as we discussed these items, the, the project has evolved this into, into what is before you tonight. It's different than when we first discussed, because when we first looked at this, we, we thought about doing a more extensive clubhouse and putting less money into the golf course. But from, from the feedback that we received from the users, from the feedback we received from the Golf Advisory Committee, it was determined that, that the style of the show is not the clubhouse, but it's actually the course. And we reversed gears, and we have, and we modified the plan to reflect that. And this is how government should act. It shouldn't act quickly, it shouldn't act impulsively, it should be done as a, as a process, and as something that is thoughtful, something that takes time, as something where engaged the public to actually come up with, get some good input from them on how this should do. Because, again, the first, the first blush, this project is basically 180 degrees from when we first started this project, how we were, what the priorities were going to be. And again, I want to thank the public and our users for being involved in this project, because really, this is not the, this is not the both golf course, this is not going to be the staff's golf course. It's really the Park District and, and this community's golf course. And I'm looking forward, going forward to this project being completed and implemented, and, and hopefully playing on that course very shortly. So it's a very exciting thing, and thank you, Dan, and your entire team, Ryan, and everybody else who's worked on it, because this could not have been done without your, your diligence, and also Liza. And Liza, again, you know, she's, first with Rosewood and now with Sunset Valley, we're slowly but surely remaking the Park District, and thank you very much.
Very well said.
It's like a motion to approve.
In a moment. Do you have any comments you'd like to share?
No. Cal said it.
I want to amplify two points, although it was very well said. One, with respect to process, obviously, during my day job, I work in the private sector, and I have been very, I don't want to say surprised, but delighted to see the process that Liza and her team used here, is the same process that we would have used if we were running this in the private sector. The expert analysis in determining which golf course to keep and to improve, what improvements need to be made, the community input was done the right way. And again, hopefully, this will serve as a model for the Park District going forward. This is not about intuition or gut feeling, or what any of the five Commissioners personally wanted, but really about what the community wanted, what we could afford to do, and done with the input of experts in the golf course industry, design experts, financial experts. And I think that process needs to be applied to all capital programs that the Park District does going forward. The second issue I wanted to address, really more just to clarify some confusion about this project, specifically, more generally, about the Park District's projects generally. As I think everyone in this room knows, the Park District is a completely separate governmental entity from the city of Highland Park, and is a completely separate entity from the two school districts that service Highland Park. We have separate taxing authority, we have separate taxing rules and regulations, we have a separate budget, we have our own user fees. We have moved towards a larger percentage of our budget being the result of user fees than tax revenues. We have reduced taxes overall over the last six years. But at the end of the day, the money that the Park District has to spend on these types of projects is money that comes both from the taxpayers and the users of our programs, it does not come from the schools, it is not given to us by the city of Highland Park. So this money that is being invested, and I use that word deliberately, invested in the infrastructure of our community, is not money that would otherwise go to the schools. We are certainly, as companion governments to the school district, very much aware and sympathetic and empathetic towards the issues that they're dealing with, the city as well. We certainly do everything that we can to work with them and cooperate with them. But the reality of the situation is that the budgets are all separate, and our investment here will not have any impact whatsoever on the school funding issues, good, bad, or otherwise, nor will it have any impact on the taxes that the schools may need to issue, the bonds they may need to issue, or on the city's taxing and bond issuances. They're all independent governments, autonomous governments, working together to improve the community. I think the significance of that is each of those governments has their own mandate. And obviously, the schools is to educate our children, the city to handle police, fire, sewer, infrastructure, and the Park District to promote health and recreation, and to preserve natural space. This investment of money is fundamentally consistent with the mission of the Park District. It will provide recreational opportunities for our community, provide leisure recreational opportunities, walking opportunities to improve health. It will have a positive impact on the environment by providing additional support for stormwater management and improving much-needed infrastructure, and will also improve public safety by continuing to improve the bridges and the related erosion issues that we are going to address as part of this project. So this is money very well spent, it is well-spent in support of the community. Hopefully, a strong Park District will provide not only a wonderful environment for the families of Highland Park, but also will have a positive impact on home values in the community as well. Not our mandate, but one of which we are certainly aware, and we certainly have seen that with Rosewood, and we certainly expect that to be the case here as well. So we are in a fortunate position of having accumulated reserves to invest and to have managed our bonding, as we talked about this, the beginning of this meeting, to have the funds available to us to make these necessary investments, to provide the best environment possible for our community, that can need to support our mandate of recreation and healthy leisure pursuits. So I share your thanks to everyone involved in this project, Liza and her team, and Dan. A special thanks to Commissioner Bernstein. I know this has been a, a project long time in coming, there's been a lot of blood, sweat, and tears, and I think the end result is truly outstanding. So thank you for your service as well.
Thank you. And I don't want to, you know, out of sight, out of mind, I don't want to forget Commissioner Kaplan and his assistance and his, Commissioner Kaplan, his participat, participation in the process, because it's been valuable also, and, you know, and he chaired the committee along with myself, and, and we couldn't be more excited with the results.
Any further comments from the Board? All right, well, I suppose that we should vote on this, then. That would be helpful, right, Dan? Would you like a vote to approve the?
It'd be great.
Would that be okay?
Yeah.
Could I get a motion to approve?
Some motion.
Could I get a second? Any discussion on the motion? All right, let's call the roll.
Commissioner Bernstein.
Aye.
Vice President Runtenberg.
Aye.
President Myers.
Aye. The motion is passed.
Congratulations, everyone. Nicely done.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Yeah.
It's a big night.
Four.
Yep, four.
All right. Now, to tell us how we're going to pay for all of this, we have our treasures report. Good evening, Director Curtis.
We are going to pay for all of this through the BINA hearing that was just approved, so now that that is on its way.
Sorry, the what hearing?
What's that?
The what hearing?
That's going to be February 21st.
No, the BINA hearing that we just had.
And BINA is?
Oh, the Bond Issuance.
Notification.
Notification Act. Thank you.
I knew that.
It's been a long day for me.
We wanted to do the BINA ASAP, so.
What's that, I'm sorry?
We wanted to do the BINA hearing ASAP, so we sent a PDF for the RSVP.
Thank you. I like it.
Okay.
To note, if you've been receiving your emails from the Park District, we're going live with the new registration system tomorrow, so I have been, we have all been very busy putting the final touches on that, so I hope that goes smoothly tomorrow. The financial information that is presented in your board packet has a word preliminary written on every single page, because that's what it is. We are nowhere near.
That was a good choice.
Closing the books. Staff had until today to put in any additional check requests that still relate to 2016. It takes a little while sometimes to receive the invoices and things that they need from their different vendors, so they had a month to do that. So we will be processing one more check run that relates to 2016, and then there are probably just a few little straggler things that will be coming through on the credit card as well. And we may have some utility bills, but for the most part, we should have all of the information we need by mid-February. So by that point, I'll have a much more complete grasp of where we are in terms of the financials. The revenue, though, that is represented there is final. It's just the expenses, and it really is the expenses related to operations. Any expenses related to personnel have been posted, that is all in there.
Do you have any reason to believe that the final numbers were materially different from what we have here?
Materially different? No. No. But there is going to be just a little fluctuation. We have gathered, staff has done, we moved, by moving up the audit till May, or, excuse me, the, the board presentation of the audit, so when you will see the audit in May, by moving that up a month, we moved the whole process up a month, and stuff, staff has been really diligent about staying on top of that and helping us get the information. So I don't think things will materially change at all.
Great. So we'll be able to keep our, our budget surplus.
Yeah.
And our favorable variance. Congratulations.
And then, in terms of the bonds, we have Moody's Call next week, which will be our rating call. I don't see any problems there. The POS statement, our first draft has already been returned to the bond advisor, so I'll be waiting on the second draft from that. But again, I don't see, foresee any problems there either, so I think this will, like Liza said, at February board meeting, we will be passing the bond ordinance. So that's all the updates that I have today.
Well, you're just half full of good news, aren't you?
Just checking it off the list, one by one.
Questions from the Board?
One, one small question. When do we expect to start seeing, except team effort, start seeing invoices for the work at Sunset Valley? seeing invoices for the work at Sunset Valley?
Well, some of those invoices we've already received, because --
Oh, I meant the, you know, start up and running.
As soon as the construction starts, we get billed on a progression standpoint, so we'll get billed, you know, 10%, 20% of project completion and so forth.
Does that answer for your question? Are you looking for a specific month?
No.
Okay.
Similar idea, yeah.
We have some planning invoices that affected 2016, but that was all part of the budget, that's where there should be, so. Any other questions?
Just, I want to make sure I'm looking at this correctly, the, based on these numbers on revenue, the tax revenue is about 11.6 million.
Mm-hmm.
Out of total revenue of 20 --
Sorry, I left my computer with them.
6.2 million.
I'm not sure what page you're looking at.
What page are you looking at?
I was looking at the first page.
Okay. Let's go a little farther, nope. Keep going.
Here.
Here. Barney prints it out.
Thank you.
There, got it.
What was your ta- what was your question, I'm sorry?
I just wanted to make sure I was understanding correctly, that of our 26.0, let's call it 3 million in revenue?
Mm-hmm.
11.6 of that came from taxes. And so, the balance was from?
Operations.
Operations. A nice ratio.
Yes, it is a nice ratio, we're holding where we need to be.
And a bond issue from last year as well, not to --
Yes, the debt extension is included in that 11 million.
Right.
Still a good ratio.
Yeah, it's a great ratio.
Terrific.
Yeah, we're, we're holding course on the plan, you know, the whole green print concept that we've, and the financial plan that we've been working under, we're slowly working through it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That brings us to our new business, Director's Report, Executive Director McCorry.
So, as I have been sitting here, listening to what happened tonight, tonight really is a monumental night, and, because it was a year ago in December that we approved the green print plan, am I right? No, December 15, yeah, that was a year ago. And so, really, the approval of the bids tonight for the golf course, it really launches the first project that was a part of Track One. And as I sit here today, and Commissioner Bernstein, you are correct, we completed Rosewood, which was a must-do, but I've said it, and I want to say it publicly, because I want to acknowledge the people that are in this room, certainly the board for all of the support that you all have provided for us, but I think that, as the executive director, who's kind of the driver of the ship, I'm really lucky to have the crew that I have, because between Kathy, and Dan Voss, and Brian, and Liz, and Annette, and Dan, and then, as the leadership team, I think that we have really worked well as a team with all of the, all of the staff and the employees that we have to really bring green print to fruition, but I think one of the things that's really, really solid about what we've gotten, Scott, you alluded to it a little bit, is that the Rosewood project was a very long project, and we learned a lot in Rosewood, and so, we have adopted this team concept, and every time, so tonight you've heard about the golf team, and we are working on POGO, which is the Parks and Golf Operations Center, and that has a team, and we're also now talking about the Recreation Center and the plans there, and that has a team. And, so, I just, from my perspective and my eight years being here, I look at our team, from the board to the people who are working at front desks all over the Park District right now, getting us ready for the rec-track conversion tomorrow, I couldn't be more pleased with the crew that we've got, and certainly the support, and really, Cal, you said it right, I mean, we've planned, we've, we're financially set, and we have direction going forward. So, I just think that this is a pretty, it's, the Park District is in such a great place, and we've been through a lot together, so I just wanted to acknowledge, certainly from my perspective, you know, the staff team, because they're the best, and you guys have been unbelievable to work with, because you always put the community first when you're making decisions, and what's in the best interest of the community, and as an executive director, I can't be in a better place. So I just want to thank everyone for everything that they've done, and I just segue a little bit into the rec-track conversion that Annette had referenced, and I equate this to the Y2K for the Park District of Highland Park, because this is the eve of Y2K, and I know that there are worker bees all over the Park District right now, trying to ensure that this, that this transition that takes place tomorrow is as smooth and as painless on our residents as is humanly possible. And there will be people here starting at 5:00 AM tomorrow, so I just really want to recognize everyone who has been a part of trying to make this as, just, I mentioned it to Scott and Barney and Cal before the meeting, and I think, Scott, you said, nothing happened in the year 2000, and let's hope that nothing happens on February 1st, 2017. So, I just, again, want to thank everyone, and I do wish us well with, with all projects going forward, which you'll continue to hear about over the next couple of years, and certainly with the kickoff of the golf project tonight. So that's my, that's my speech that I wasn't planning on giving until I sat here, and listened to everything, and now to get into some of the more interesting items on the Director's Report, but one thing I do want to comment on is, we had talked a little bit about golf course bridges, but let's talk about the bridge at Sleepy Hollow Park. So as you all know, that bridge failed a couple of weeks ago, and we had one of the concrete blocks that is upsided now, and we have been working with a contractor who happens to be, his company is in Chicago, but he happens to be a Highland Park resident, and we have, I signed a contract tonight to enter into work with them for the removal of the bridge. Now, we are working with the city in terms of communication, because there will be a little bit of a traffic snafu in that area, and the contractor has gone to the city today to fill out his proper paperwork. So, we have been communicating with the neighbors of that area, and we always have updates on the website. So the plan is, we hope that removal may begin as early as next week. But as soon as we have more information, we'll, of course, keep it, we'll keep you updated on the website, and we will certainly stay in touch, there's a group, I think that they're called the Highland, and that's all the neighbors of that area, so we're just keeping them in the loop as to what's going on there. And then we will be engaging in the services of an engineer to help us figure out what the design of a new bridge will look like, so we'll continue to keep everyone in the loop on that, so I just wanted to update everyone on that. And then, in terms of events, this Saturday is a very busy day for the Park District of Highland Park. We start in the morning, we have Nature Discovery Day, and I see Manager Jeff Smith back there. This is a great event for families, it celebrates winter, it celebrates Heller and all things, and all of the events that are put on at Heller are great, so that is going to take place from, pardon me, 10 to noon. I think that the only activity that we will not be participating in is cross-country skiing, so, but there will be plenty other things to do. And then --
Has it ever snowed for the winter carnival?
Yes. Yeah.
And we had, it's like every year, we managed to miss it.
Yeah, it's been a really rough year for outdoor ice, but it's been a rough year for sledding, it's been a rough year for cross-country skiing, but, oh well, we live in the Midwest and we never know, so, maybe next year. And then, the Saturday evening at the Highland Park Country Club, we have the daddy-daughter dance memories for some of you with daughters.
Missed that.
There's only one at the table. But that event takes place in the evening, and I think we have 250 attending that event.
You haven't missed Spotlight again?
No, I don't know, we'll have lots of nice things, but we have also added a dinner option this year, so instead of just refreshments and dancing, so that's always a fun event. And then, for those that don't wish to participate in that or don't have daughters, we are having a family tennis night at Deer Creek from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And then, another thing that I want to note is, we have gone live with the new website for Sunset Valley and Highland Park Golf Courses, and if you were to Google Highland Park Golf, you would get a website that will feature both, it can link you to Sunset Valley or the Highland Park Country Club, it looks great. And lastly, I would like to put out a plea, which hopefully I will remember to do every month, is that we are in the process right now of looking for lifeguards, camp counselors, desk attendants, et cetera, so anyone can apply for one of the many jobs that we have online, www.pdhp.org. And that is all I have for you this evening.
Excellent, thank you. Questions from the board?
I just have two comments.
Please.
Comment number one, I've, since the boards went up at the rec center, I'm getting a lot of feedback with regard to the proposed renovations, and it's all positive, people are very excited, and a lot of questions, I, hopefully I was able to answer some of them, but I think generally, I don't know Barney, if you've heard any feedback from the --
All positive.
All positive, I think people are very excited about the renovations. That's number one. Number two, I was looking at the Director's Report, and I noticed that there's something about the ash trees, and made me think that we haven't had a presentation in a while about the status of the removal of ash trees throughout the district, and I think maybe at a future workshop meeting, it'd be nice to hear where we are and what we're going with regarding removing those ash trees.
Okay.
Need not include the entomology of the emerald ash borer.
I got it. I think we're closing, I want to say we're closing in on, on the end.
Okay.
So, but we'll give you an update.
All right, thank you.
Yep, all right. Next item, public address, if anybody from the public would like to address the board now, would be the time to do it. No takers tonight, all right.
Why are you answering?
Commissioner Bernstein made a comment.
The lockers don't work in the locker rooms, we're always getting locked out because they're worn out, the locks are worn out. And I understand that you're putting the money into this project, but I do hope that you're planning in the future to take care of the swimmers too, because you come there at 5:30 in the morning, and every lane is two or three people, and even later in the day, it's a very used facility, and showing it's rare.
Commissioner Runtberg, you want to address that?
Yes, I would be pleased, but is there another point that you want to bring up? Is there anything else? Something positive?
Yes, water temperature is good. I do, I do your job, but, you know, the locker room is shabby, and it's just that you've got such a beautiful facility, it should be beautiful everywhere.
As we were, if I may.
Please.
We were looking at the enhancements that we're going to do to the fitness side of the house, we realized, and in part also by your comment about the lighting, that we need to take a look at the aquatic center. And we haven't yet brought this to the board or discussed it in a lot of detail, but I think that, once we start rolling out the work, we can then take some time and attention to the pool and study it, and see what things we need, I know you brought up lights, there's probably, and there's going to be other things, and so I, we are very aware of that, and in part, again, thanks to your bringing it to our attention. And, you know, any other things you'd like to bring to our attention, we'll consider too. But it's on the agenda that in this year, we would start paying, you know, start rolling it out, because as you can hear from the golf course project, it takes a lot of time.
I want to live long enough to put back in the sea.
You're not going anywhere, Ma.
She moved. But, but we, but it will be a 2017, take a look at and see what we can do, plan, project.
So, all of the facilities are part of our capital review process, and Liza and her team looks at all of the various amenities. What's that?
We can do it all at once, I know that, but this is an important factor, and I think that planning for the future, and you're going to have a classy, a classy golf course, you've got, everything is top, and we're really ranked very high in Park Districts, am I right?
You are. Number one.
And I see a lot of more seniors joining, and I don't know if that's become evident to you, but there are more seniors that are now joining because of your classes, because they're, they're wonderful, and everybody loves the look of the place, but I just feel like the second class servicing of that pool.
Hang in there, it'll get done.
Understood.
Okay.
Barney's on it.
Yes.
And you should call him daily for updates.
Yes, let him make, make sure he calls you, and you take the tenants if he calls you.
Yeah, sure.
I'll keep, I'll keep him on.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Yes.
Two quick things, first off, congratulations on the golf course, it sounds like it should be ripping, it's very exciting. Second, Calabac High School is in the process of completing the pool and the appropriate area, and make sure how much availability there is for the Park District to utilize those facilities, but it's really pretty incredible, huge, massive, beautiful building, so if there's a lane for the Park District to work with, it's, we'll, we'll be able to.
Do you know if there's time available, like 5:30 in the morning?
Yes, and make sure there's enough lights there, and the locker room's okay too.
The pool is 75 foot wide.
What's the temperature of the pool water, though? That's an important thing, though.
112.
The pool is 75 feet wide?
The pool is 75 feet wide.
That's amazing.
Is it 8, does it?
Well, no, it's actually 10.
Well, that's where you're shooting half meter.
Yes. Let's do a bond issue for close to $200 million.
No, I could tell, Rick, it's, it's a Park District, and in fact, it could probably address this better than me, over the years, we've had a great relationship with 113, we've used their gymnasiums on weekends for clinics, for baseball clinics when my kids were younger, we used to do that, I don't know how much we had access to the pool, but, you know, with the swim clubs and stuff like that, they work really well, they work swimmingly together, to make sure that the, that they're coordinate both our pools and the high school's pools.
So they have a bulkhead which keeps it basically 75 feet by 75 feet for the main area of the guy, which reduces that pool for a guy. So it's a pretty exciting facility, and we have a table tour, the crew work in the high school, we all need to, because the sea building for the academic is incredible, the hallway that connects the sea building with the artory area, has the technology labs in it, it's really, really.
That's excellent. Well, I know that we have a long history of working closely with the high school, certainly their golf teams, for example, so this will be another opportunity for us to --
I mean, our football program uses Walters Fields on Sunday, so there's a lot of synergy between the Park District and 113, and 112.
And even have the classes that you might offer, they could have these beautiful computer labs, these technology centers, that could be, maybe summer programs, there's a whole lot of opportunity that might be available in this facility.
You know, Liza and I went to the intergovernmental meeting, and they said, I think they're going to be done by March.
Yeah, I think they're starting their community tours in March, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, I think they said in March they're going to be done, and I look forward to seeing, you know, Scott and I both have high school-aged kids, so we're in the high school, so we see what's going on there, and it's remarkable.
I know the staff is, is, we'll get a sneak peek from them, so, and we are looking forward to it, because we saw the gyms in construction, and then we have not seen the pool, and they were obviously waiting for the pool to be completed, so that the locker rooms could be open, so then we'll be able to access more.
Those I have in the year, I've seen the year.
Yeah.
And it's, it's going to be current. Have Todd give the tour, he's, that's all.
Mm-hmm.
He just likes to look something.
Yeah, dead in the candy store.
And he should be.
New toys.
He deserves it.
Excellent, anyone else?
I just have a quick question from the green print, it said, page 50, as the Park District continues to take on more natural area management, it'll be important to continue tracking natural use, a natural area survey needs to be updated every five years, it was asked up here, so that is on.
It's on our calendar, yes.
That's it.
I'm glad someone read it.
I read it a year.
Did you?
Be sure that's on page 50, I thought it was 49.
Yeah, was it the third paragraph or the fourth paragraph?
Subsection.
It's one of my favorite subsections in the green print. Anyone else? Anyone else? All right, so that brings us to our closed session, could I please get a motion to go into closed session pursuant to the following sections of the Open Meetings Act, 2C1, 2C5, 2C6, 2C8, 2C11, 2C21, and 2C29.
Second.
Could I get a second?
Second.
We call the roll.
Commissioner Bernstein?
Aye.
Vice President Runtberg?
Aye.
President Myers?
Aye, we are in closed.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks for coming, everyone. Thank you, everyone, and that great chat.